Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
All right. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Legislative and Human Resources Committee for Tuesday, December 12th quarter. Do we have any public comment today? All right, seen none. We will move on to approval of the minutes from November 14th. Do I have a motion?
Summated.
Support.
By Commissioner Breeby, support by Commissioner Vaughn. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll post. All right, moving on to item three, Drain Commission Performance Measurement Update. Drain Commissioner Yonker, welcome.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here and give you my first update on what I attempted to do this past year. And I have five minutes, I better get right to it. I'd like to start off with reviewing the mission of the Drain Commissioner. The mission of the Drain Commissioner's office is to improve and maintain stormwater drainage for the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens of Kent County. It is also to be an effective and efficient steward of our natural resources and physical resources. The Drain Commissioner, as you know, is elected to a four-year term to perform a number of duties designed by state law. The Office of the Drain Commissioner is responsible for the administration of the State Drain Code as it applies to the receipt of petitions for the establishment, improvement, or maintenance of over 558 miles of county drains and 357 stormwater detention ponds in Kent County. Under the Subdivision Control Act, this office reviews stormwater plans for all Platts developed within the county and maintains records on over 1,800 developments. Other duties include the administration of 19 court-established lake levels under the Lake Level Act. And it participates on lake level boards, maintenance of the GIS system as it pertains to county drains, and the resolution of citizen complaints and requests for service. The Department and its staff of five responds to requests from municipality citizens and property owners for assistance in addressing flooding and surface water drainage. In 2014, there was 99 requests, 49 maintenance projects. In 2015, 80 requests, 35 maintenance questions. 2016, 149 requests, 48 maintenance projects. 2017, when this was written, we had 163 requests and we're working on 35 projects. The Office received and responded to, to date, its 167 requests of service to be done in our county drains. And to date, we have completed 165 of those. Wind damage is caused as one of our number-one causes for service requests. We've had a lot of straight winds this spring, and those drains have been totally dammed up with these logs. So there was, there is a total of about 16 miles, 16 to 20 miles of drain that we had to get opened up again. And these are our major drains. These aren't the smaller drains that feed into the bigger ones. We provide a leadership for the remediation of the damage to the Little Thorn Apple intercounty drain, working closely with Berry and Ionia Counties. That's been a very expensive project. We're at about 200,000 to date, and the DEQ is not completely satisfied yet, but we're real close. We worked with IT GIS team to place requests for service on a real-time electronic system to process service requests using iPad Surface Tablets, which significantly increased efficiency. Phase one of the technology project began in July of 2017, and there's a phase two that will even create more efficiency within our system of archiving our records. We purchased a John Deere Gator so that drain inspections through fields and wetlands are now done thoroughly and efficiently, eliminating the need to rent an ORV when we have those larger inspections to do. And we, to create a more diverse pool of contractors, because we were really having a hard time getting the work done that was being asked of us, so we had to go find some more contractors that would be willing and fit the niche that we do. And I personally went and visited with the Hispanic Chamber and met some contractors there, and one stepped up, was interested, and that's new life, our new valley landscaping, the Garcia family, and found them to be a very, a very professional contractor. And it's been very successful working with them this year. So that's a pretty good summary of what we've done. There's actual objectives on the back, and I'll kind of leave that for you to look at, and you can question accordingly. And I will open this up for questions.
Thanks for keeping it to five minutes.
Pardon?
Extra points for keeping it to five minutes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I know the more you say, the more trouble you get, until you smile over there.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Yes, Ken, let's say, for example, you have 120 requests, and you're able to work on 100 of those drains. What happens with the 20? Are they just fall out, or they moved into the following year?
Yeah, we, we have-
Percentage of those, what happens to them?
We have a couple, Ted, that, they're larger projects, they become into the project level, and so then we have to go through the full hearing process, and that'll take two to three months. So now, there's two of them now just going out for bid. But these are projects, one's going to be about 60,000, the other one's going to be about 200,000. So when those get done, and those are in farmer fields, so we couldn't do much during that part of the season. But they were requests for service, so they'll be completed as we go through the winter.
So all those get, all those requests get handled?
Yep.
Some in the following year, fall over?
Yep. Every one of them are 100% satisfied within a year and a half.
Oh, okay.
If they go. But that's my goal.
Okay, good.
And another thing that we've done is, one of the shifts that I expect is 48 return calls, and every call we get in, 48 hours. So people aren't waiting months and two months. People are hearing from our office within 48 hours. And with the real-time system we have now, I've been, where I was up in Sparta, going through some inspection requests, and I went to a house, and a lady had called a half hour earlier. But the green dot came up on my screen, I was up there, so I could catch it, and they were really impressed. But that's technology. And our IT team has been phenomenal in helping us develop this thing, and so we can apply it. So it's been very exciting and very nice.
Thanks, Ken, appreciate that.
Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you, Chair. So, Ken, the requests you get, 163 last year, how many of those are from the general public, and how many of those are from municipalities asking for help on trying to diagnose and solve a problem they have with their drainage system?
They're 99% general public.
Okay.
And most of them, we can accommodate.
So when cities call you in, they, I know you fixed some problems in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, you know, you were called in by the city to come and help engineer and solve the problem. So I just wonder how frequently that happens in other areas. I mean, Grand Rapids, I'm sure, is the oldest drainage system in the area. But just not very often, huh?
It's, there's a couple large projects that the city of Grand Rapids has kind of taken lead on, but most of those that we have fixed, that the city's involved in, it usually starts with us, and then we go to them.
I see.
Because they pay the bill.
So-
So we usually bring them in where we need them.
So a quick follow-up on that. What's your opinion on the general condition of the drains within the county?
We have a lot of work to do.
Okay.
But we, we got our major ones, we got a lot of our major ones, especially down through Byer. We spent a lot of their money this year in Byer Center. And when we had these early rains, we didn't have any calls come in. And we used to, especially in the muck farms. But we checked those drains, and they're flowing really well, so we got them cleaned up. The key thing is being able to stay on top of it. So I'm being a lot more proactive in my view of these drains. I'm already working on next year's list, so then the assessment roles can be worked on through the winter, instead of last minute. Doug and Angie have put in a lot of hours just trying to keep up with the work that we got done this year, so.
So one last follow-up, if I might. As far as mapping and understanding how different drains in different areas look, is that something that you do, and you keep a record of that, some sort of technology?
Yeah.
And then you know that if you have a problem, you can sort of diagnose where it might be in the future?
Yeah, we archive everything we do on our drains, and that's the beauty of this job, is I can look back at a drain and see what was done in the past, because every drain kind of has its own personality. And Angie keeps all the data, keeps the GIS all up to date. There's any changes in a drain, that all gets filed in the GIS system. And then we have our system, and we are starting Friday with our intern to get all our files ready, start electronic filing. So that stuff will then be able for everybody to see if they want to know. That'll help, have more access. The thing that we're gonna try to put an effort into is all of our easements, none of them are recorded. Very few, very few. And back in the day, in the 1800s, early 1900s, they didn't do that. So we have the records, but we ran into a couple almost legal issues with some people that their deed on their property had the easement recorded wrong, because the survey company went to the wrong area. So, but we had the legal easement, and we were right. So we're gonna try and get those recorded, so they can go on properties accurately.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Stett.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Ken. Does your department have jurisdiction over circumstances where surface water flooding begins to develop, but it's separated and disconnected from an existing county drain?
We do not have any jurisdiction on that. It has to be within a county drain for us to be.
So the citizens recourse at that point is either self-help or go to the local jurisdiction?
Yeah, your city or your township, or else it becomes a civil case.
Right.
And there are precedents set. Our attorney with the association, Stacy Hillsong, she's pretty adamant, and we had some classes last week on personal property rights, and when you get involved, when you don't, and if you do, be very careful, because we don't want to put the county into any kind of liability that we can't stand behind.
No, we're against that.
Yeah. Still a little nervous on that.
Is the network of county drains, is that expanding, or?
It's pretty stable. Well, there's a couple, and we're gonna eliminate, that were out there, but they're not working. And we're gonna open one up, particularly in Gaines Township, and because if it's there, by law, by statute, I have to make it operable. And we had some complaints in the area. So we did a hydrology study on it, because we hear complaints that it's not a good thing. So we did a hydrology study on it, Brad did, and come to find out, if we were to open that, we had a high water. The stream that it flows into is not a county drain, and that would have risen and backed up through that drain and flooded the other side of Burton Street, would have made the problem worse.
What's the process, if I may, what's the process for either adding or subtracting to the system? Do they have to petition the system?
Yeah.
Petitions your department, and you say yea or nay, or it goes somewhere else?
They petitions us, and then we have to hold a board of approval.
Either way, whether you're decertifying or adding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Always good to see you. It was, I mean, my one opportunity, since I'm an urban rat, I don't have much drain, but we do have one through the district that goes underground, and I remember having fun with you, looking at that, and City Commissioner Kelly, and Commissioner Corndyke, how that happens. But, quick question. Happy almost one-year anniversary in your role?
Yeah.
How's the transition been at the highest level? I mean, again, it's only been a year, it seems like you've been here for a long time? What, how's it been going?
Yeah, I feel like it sometimes. It's, everything just went so smooth.
Okay.
The support I had from Darrell and Brett Weyman, it's just been phenomenal. All the staff, the IT, all the departments, HR, you know, the classes that they offered that I was participated in helped me understand how the county works. My staff has been phenomenal. I actually got to the point that I told them I'm here to do a job, quit doing my work, you know, because they wanted to make it comfortable. No, it was just a very positive experience for me. There's a lot of days, I got to pinch myself and wonder how I deserve this job working here, and I'm working for the county, has been, been just one of the best employers I've worked for.
All right. Thank you.
So I really appreciate what you guys do and have done, and the county you guys have built. It's great. We can be proud of that, because we're definitely, in my eyes, in my experience, practically now, we're one of the best counties in the state of Michigan, without doubt. And I've been to a lot of them over the years.
The best.
We are. As far as being functional, you know, and actually, and the professionalism and the quality of life that we offer because of who you are. And that's what I appreciate, what I can do with my grandkids because of what this county offers. It's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate your passion for drains. I can tell that you love your job, just, you know, what you said, and talking to you previously, too. I'm curious about the Gaines Township project. Where is that located in the district?
The Gaines Center is on, along 84th Street, the one that we're eliminating?
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to? Yeah, that's on, along 84th Street, off from Burton, or Brett.
Okay.
It's, it's a drain that has not been, has not had water flow through it in 20 years. And there was a process that went a couple predecessors ago that was less unethical, and how that was eliminated, but it wasn't legally eliminated.
Okay.
So the tile is still in the field, but it's all crushed. And it's caved in, and there's areas in the field, you can see the tile where the dirt washed away, but both ends of the tile are covered, you can't find them. But it's still a legal easement, and we are still by law required to have that functional. It'd be very expensive to fix it. But even with that, we, I was willing to do that. But when we did the study, it, I understood why they discontinued it, because it was creating more of a hazard for the property owners than with it there. So what they did back about, that was probably about 10, 15 years ago, they ran the drain the opposite, to the west, and emptied it in the Brewer drain. Brewer drain is a county drain. And so this tile, though it's, it's not very adequate, but the property owners have assured me they will keep an eye on it, because we spent two days unplugging that thing last spring, and that water was lapping at their back doors. And it took two days, a 350-foot of tile, we had to get, to get it cleaned out, and it was full of silt. So, and partly is because of the type of pipe they use. It wasn't the right, it shouldn't have been done with that kind of product, but it's there. And instead of going to the expense to replace it, we're kind of working with the homeowners, they're gonna keep an eye on it. If we have another problem, where we gotta continually spend $2,000, $3,000 to maintain that pipe, it's gonna be cheaper to replace it and put good pipe in, so. But we're gonna monitor it and see how it works.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? Seen none. Thank you, Commissioner Yonker, for coming in today.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. All right, item four, Prosecutor's Office Performance Measurement Review, five minutes. Prosecutor Becker.
Oh, you're five.
He's 15.
Oh, is it 15? I'm sorry.
I can take five. I'll do that.
Five to 15.
Just somewhere ballpark, so. Good, I didn't time this. I appreciated also the opportunity to get up here and talk to you a little bit about what we're doing, and what we're doing in the office in the last year. Obviously, somewhat of a larger transition when Bill left after four years of me taking over. I went with a PowerPoint, because that's, I get used to doing those in the courtroom, because that's the way technology is. When you present to a jury, you gotta be visual and audio. That's what they're teaching us in schools. So I start off with, you know, just like Ken did, in terms of, here's our mission statement, to protect the rights, safety, and security of Kent County residents through diligent efforts to prosecute criminal offenses in Kent County. And that was a, you know, I remember going through this mission statement when we came up with it a few years ago, and I think it does capture, in essence, what we do. But I think our job's much larger, and I think when you look at the priorities that the county has set out for what we need to do in terms of our role, you know, it's much broader than that. You know, obviously, high quality of life ties right in with the safety and security. So that's, that's an important thing. But citizen participation, proactive, innovative government, and efficient use of resources are all something that I tried to focus on when doing this presentation, because I think those are also very important, and very important for you as elected officials to know what we're doing. So we start looking at it, and I know Bill was a big proponent of, you know, taking the whole office, looking at all the other offices, and taking all the attorneys, and dividing them up, and saying, this is, you know, this is what you're coming up with, in essence. I tried to dig a little bit deeper to kind of give you a real picture of what does this mean? What does it mean when we're dealing with our office? And felonies are kind of what we're known for. If you talk about what's a prosecutor do, well, it's the rape trial, it's the murder trial, it's the, you know, the big cases that we see on CSI and Law &amp; Order and so forth like that. So when you look at the actual attorneys that we're using, I'm using in our office, we have 15 attorneys assigned to the criminal docket. Okay, 15 attorneys, we have about, for, last year was about 4,082 felony cases. So those cases are going into those 15 attorneys, so a divide, we'll break it down right there. About 255 cases per attorney is what we're actually dealing with when you're over there in the felony docket at the Kent County Circuit Court. Now, that number, you know, sounds big, and I think it'll be a little bit even more larger when I get into it later on in my presentation, to talk about what that means when you start looking about caseload docket analysis when you're talking about the indigent defense. But it gives you a number to go off of, and that also goes to the juvenile attorneys. When you start looking at the juvenile attorneys, I think it's very interesting, because you see, you know, 2014 is 409, 307. And that, I guess, is maybe some of your good work, because the County Commission approved an additional juvenile spot probably about three years ago, because of the caseload issues we were having in the juvenile division. That, obviously, you can see what impact that has had. That was a tremendously needed position that we got. But even when you start looking at, whether it be the felony caseload or the juvenile caseload, I don't think that really tells the full, it's not just, that's all they're working on. I mean, the felony attorneys are still approving warrants, they're still doing motions, they're still going to court, which takes up a lot of time for those of you who have ever been to court. When you really look at the juvenile attorneys, yeah, the juvenile delinquency are just the crimes with juveniles. So your larceny, your retail fraud, something like that, but that doesn't truly capture everything a juvenile attorney does either. Neglect hearings, we have a contract with DHHS, or FIA, or whatever they're called this year. They change it every few years. But that, you know, we represent-
You're going there next year.
We represent them in neglect and termination, parental termination. We throw another 872 cases onto those seven attorneys, as well as the incompetency hearings. Those are the mental incompetency hearings where people are, you know, involuntary committed, we have to represent and go represent the families or even the hospitals. Well, 255 of those are coming from outside the county. These aren't even Kent County, you know, these are Moncom County. Why is that? Because we have all the resources here. We have Pine Rest, we have Forest View, so they're sending that, and it's, you know, as chief assistant, I got a ton of those phone calls, you know. Chief Assistant in, you know, Benzy County wants us to represent them in a hearing, though we can't say no, it's, you know, we gotta do it. But that just throws on top of the 2,000 cases that they're already doing in juvenile delinquency. So I think that really gives you a picture of, you know, how much, you know, bang for the buck it is, since you're getting from, whether it be the 15 felony attorneys or the seven juvenile attorneys that are actually working day-to-day in the Prosecutor's Office. And I thought, you know, this was a good one, I just stole this one for Bill. When you start looking, we break down the population versus our staff. 34 attorneys, you know, and the population of Kent County is more over 600,000. We're about 1355, which is second. You know, Moncom County's a little bit cheaper than us, but per taxpayer, that's a pretty good efficient use of resources. Especially when you look at Wayne, it's $22 per APA, and we're at, you know, we're at half of that. I think that's when you're talking about delivery of efficient resources, that does a nice job. But it's not all about efficiency, and this is, I guess, one of the more, the prouder things that I'm, you know, looking at, what we did this year, is this partnership we have with the Hispanic Center. Given the, you know, election of Trump, and we don't get too political, but there has been a chilling effect in terms of the immigrant population that wants to go to court, and it impacts our cases. They're, they're victims just like anybody else, just like a citizen, they're victims. And so whether it be a domestic violence, whether it be a robbery, if they're afraid to call the police, if they're afraid to come down to the courthouse, they can call the police all they want, but if we can't prosecute the bad guy, because they don't want to come to court, because there has been instances of immigration and nationalization shown by courthouses, and arresting people, we have a big issue. So I sat down with Roberto Torres, that was one of the outreach things I did when I first got elected, and said, you know, hey, I want to establish a relationship, and it was his idea, I'm not gonna, you know, take credit for it. He said, hey, I come from Toledo, this is what they did there. They have victim advocates from the Toledo Prosecutor's Office go to the Hispanic Center. I said, we can do that. So we started just in August, we sent two victim advocates from our office, usually one, one for a Friday afternoon, to go out to the Hispanic Center, just sit down. They, the staff knows they're coming, the staff will set up appointments from them, and it's not necessarily, it doesn't have to be criminal case, it could be just criminal justice, to just have, build a relationship, to show that, you know, we're not, you know, we're not gonna go try and lock them up. We're not trying, we're trying to build that relationship. We want them to come down, because we can't have people that are getting away with crimes in Kent County, because they're preying on really vulnerable victims who are afraid to come down. So this is a picture of what I did, and it's helped this relationship. I went out to a domestic violence presentation they had for Domestic Violence Month at the Hispanic Center. And it was very interesting, because I needed the interpreter. I'm in their territory, so I need an interpreter for me, so it gave me a taste of what it's almost like to be out there. So it's, you know, we know them, they know us, I think it's starting to build relationships, and hopefully that will pay off in terms of getting people down to court to participate in the criminal justice system if they're afraid to do so. And that's kind of been the focus all around, and if you look at my presentation, you know, Rock the Block, that's something I'm really focusing on, trying to get out, whether it be Rock the Block, whether it be National Out, to show another face, because law enforcement is taking ahead. And the sheriff can tell you just as well as I can, in terms of what's going on in the media, we're lumped in with that. We being the Prosecutor's Office, because we're seen as an arm of whatever law enforcement agency there is. We're not. I mean, I think there's plenty of times where the sheriff and I or Chief Rohinsky or any other enforcement people will disagree on how we proceed in a case or what to do with the case, and that is our role, that's our appropriate role, and I think the sheriff will agree with that as well. But out in the public, that's not the perception. So I want to try and do things to get us out in the public, to show a different face. To, you know, almost like the community policing, to show that we're, you know, out there, we're just not people wanting to throw people in jail because that's all I hear is, oh, you just want to get another conviction. No, we don't want to get another conviction, we want to see justice done. Because if we get the wrong person, that means there's somebody out there that committed a crime that, you know, we didn't hold accountable, and that's wrong. So getting out of these public functions, whether, you know, the DVCCRT, the Domestic Violence Community Coordinated Response Team, that's something I'm very proud of being participating in. So these are all things that I'm trying to get our staff, it's not just me, it's our staff to get out there as well. And I'm really encouraging them, and I've had very good participation, they're very excited about it as well, and I think they've had some good events, veterans events, you know, other, other things that we've really participated in that are trying to put another face and get people out there. The one new collaboration I'm really working on is the Families Against Narcotics. When you look at the opioid abuse, we did a presentation earlier to the Health and Human Services Committee with the county. You look at opioid deaths last year, 70, we've got 66 already in the county as of just August, so we've got a few more, we're going to exceed that. So the opioid thing that you're hearing across the country is, the hearing in Kent County as well. So I'm on the board of the Families Against Narcotics because it's a great group that is really trying to, A, provide support to family members. You go to some of our meetings, you see the people who, you know, probably about half have had a family member die because of use of narcotics. The other half are there because they're going through rehab or they're in the throes of addiction. And how you can provide support and how you work with other entities to try and, you know, is there a way to combat this? To bring those numbers down so we as a criminal justice don't have to deal with them, deal with the drug people who are re-offending, but also to prevent the people from dying and trying to prevent this addiction. Another thing we started this year, we had a kind of a, let me say a lot, but a number of instances where, you know, middle schoolers. Middle schoolers, high schoolers, they're exchanging inappropriate photos, naked photos. Hey, you know, show me your, show me your thing, I'll show you ours. And the phones are a wonderful thing, but they're, we're getting in, we have 40 kids in one middle school that are doing it. And we kind of said, well, we're not going to do anything about that, we're not going to charge a bunch of kids. It's peer to peer, there's not necessarily pressure, it's not, you know, coercion, it's just kids doing kid stuff on phones, but it's obviously very dangerous because that get on the internet. We're kind of frustrated by that, that we couldn't do anything. So we started this with, Corrective Solutions was a company we're working with, our Bad Check Program. We got rid of the Bad Check Program, we've switched that to Court Services now because checks are going down. But Corrective Solutions had a program where juvenile, we can put them through a class, a four-hour class, online class, where they got to answer questions, there's prompts through it, so they just can't go walk off and have the thing play for four hours. Well, they actually have to participate, and if they successfully participate, we don't charge them. So it's a way that, you know, most schools, my kids are in school now, are having some sort of education to their students about the dangers of sexting and so forth, but this is maybe another shot across the bow. We're not giving them, you know, if they go through this, it's not, it's a diversionary, they don't get any record, nothing on that, but it's maybe another, you know, heads up that, hey, this, this could have an impact, and maybe this catches their attention more than just another class in school. So it's something we've already, we just launched this about two months ago, and we've already had about six referrals. I sent out letters to all the superintendents, to all the juvenile justice partners that we have, and so we're already seeing some people come in for that. So we're really kind of excited about what this can do and have gotten good feedback as well. One of the things we're also working on is the Family Division, our child support, setting up child support and, you know, paternity. We are working with the Front of the Court to try and set up a task force. We've been working on that task force, we're hoping next week, I think they're going to call it KEAT or something along those lines, but to try and get early intervention, that we get child support orders within the first, you know, couple of months at the latest. You know, we're not going, we're, we're pretty good. You know, I think 90 days is what we're averaging now, so, but if we can do that sooner, where we get early engagement with the mothers and get even DNA testing as the child is born, that's going to speed up the child support process. So these are some of the things we are working on, and I, I think that are going to provide benefit to the citizens of Kent County and something that we're very proud of what we're doing. Looking at the future technology, IT, I see him back, I see Craig back there, he's a, we're going to be hitting him up. The body cameras, Grand Rapids Police Department body cameras are a huge technology issue that we have to deal with. And, you know, we're looking at some of our computers, we're getting six new ones, but we've got quite a few that are obsolete right now. We've got to get our computers up to speed, and along with the computers, we need the technology to edit the body cam videos. There's a lot of stuff on there that we can't be putting out to the public, and we could be responsible for, you know, social security numbers. If the police ask, we got body camera on the social security number, could be even an address, there's, there's certain things that we're, we, hopefully we'd like to edit. We don't have the capabilities now because we have like two programs for the Cantasia to edit stuff like that. So that's, that's the biggest thing that we're going to be looking at is technology and how that impacts us. And going back to my caseload, when you look at the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission that are coming out with caseload recommendations for appointed attorneys for indigent defendants, and this is where we get back to what we're talking about, 150 felony cases for indigent defense attorney. If you remember, my attorneys have got 255 cases, if you look at those numbers. 400 non-traffic misdemeanors, where you look at our misdemeanors, there are about 770. I have five misdemeanor attorneys that are covering all the courtrooms, and they're averaging about 700 cases. Now, I'm not up here saying I need more attorneys, I think we're doing a fine job, but it just gives you an idea of what we, you are getting for your money, and you start comparing it to what the recommendations for indigent defense attorneys, well, we're way above what they're recommending for the indigent defense as public servants, and I think that's not what should be, but I think we're doing a fine job on what we have. But it just gives you an idea, comparison of what you're getting for your money. In the future, coming down, I am going to, we're going to be launching a restorative justice program here in the next month or so. Been working on that all year, I think we're ready to get that going. It's going to be a focused program for juvenile offenders, we're starting out small, malicious destruction property, assault and battery, and marginal offenses. The restorative justice is where you have the victim and the defendant meet and kind of go over, you know, why did you do this? How did this impact you? The idea is what they tell us is that there's a bond, if you will, that kind of goes between the two, and they understand each other, and they come up with their own punishment. And I'm really focusing on juveniles because I talked with Fred Van Louw, who's the prosecutor, one of the prosecutors in Des Moines, Iowa, really started that, he said it could lead to a 40% reduction in crime, that's what he saw in Des Moines. 40% reduction in juvenile crime is a huge number, and that would be something we're really, so we're going to start small and see how the public accepts that, and see how, quite frankly, the, the defense and bar accepts this, to see if they participate. But it's something we're really working on. We're also working on a sex offender program, ASOTP, if you're familiar with that, the Alternative Sex Offender Treatment Program, the juvenile system, we want to try and broaden that for 17 to 21-year-olds. We think that's an important thing because, just because, you know, 16 to 17, they do some stupid things as sex offenders, and once again, going into the consensual area where you have a 17-year, 15-year-old, well, that's a CSC third, that can go to prison. They're having sex, how many 17 and 15-year-olds are having sex in Kent County? You know, if we start charging all those, we wouldn't have enough, we'd drive up those caseload numbers. But we want to start looking at that as a way to get them treatment, and once again, to understand what they're doing and not necessarily get them a criminal offense or a sex offense that they're going to send them to prison. And then we're hoping to start a domestic violence court, that was through 61st, but that's, it'll be interesting to see what that happens because I think we're having problems getting grant funding. But those are three things on the horizon that I'm hoping to get rolling through our office and in conjunction with other agencies. So I think I'm pretty close to 15 minutes, it feels like I went fast. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for prosecutor, Commissioner Boxer?
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Welcome, Chris. It doesn't take one to watch the news or even read the newspapers that are left, that the belief for a lot of people is that justice isn't equal. You know, the better your attorney, the better the outcome. Is that something that you think about? Is that always going to be a belief system because human nature, that some get treated different than others by the deck of cards that they?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, and that's kind of why I'm trying to do the public outreach, I think there's a lot of, there's trust. It's going to be trust in law enforcement, trust in prosecutors and the system, and education for what is, what goes on in the system. I've had that conversation with the NAACP and the Urban League in terms of, you know, why, how do people get sentenced? Nobody really realizes that there's sentencing guidelines. I mean, it's not just they pull a number out of their hat over the circuit court that judges do. There's actually a formula that they go through in terms of, you know, points for your prior record, points for this, and people are like, wow, that, that happens? So a lot is education, a lot is just, you know, being out there more to, so for people to trust you and hopefully have more trust in the system. I don't think we'll ever completely get away from, you know, there's always going to be that perception that, you know, it's not equal justice, but I think there's certain steps we can take, and I'm trying to take them to hopefully, you know, beat back those, those ideas.
I mean, you know, it is tough. One, one only needs to walk into a jail anywhere in America and see the fact that justice is not fair across the board. And, you know, it seems like every month there's something new with the city of Grand Rapids Police Departments on who they're apprehending, how they're doing it, the age of the person. And it's just, I mean, it's, it seems to me just watching this that we're getting to a point where we're, we're going in the wrong direction. And I'm not faulting your department, but there, there seems, there's, there's, there's got to be better, you know, collaboration because when you've got an 11-year-old being held at gunpoint that doesn't even closely match the description of who they're looking for, I mean, that's a problem for the whole community.
Sure.
And, and, and I just see, you know, it doesn't seem to be improving, it's, it's just a concern from someone looking from afar.
Sure.
And it's not to be critical of police, you or anyone, it's, it's just a fact, and with instant social media, these things just get blown up really quick and...
And I'm cognizant of that fact, and, and that's also why I'm trying to be as open as I can in terms of my relationship with the media, my relationship with other community partners. You know, an officer involved shooting, I just came with an opinion on, I released that to the media, it was, you know, I had a press conference, 14 pages, I think you all got a copy of it, to try and explain, you know, here's what we're seeing here. So I think, you know, once again, going to the education, here's open and honest, I also sent that press release to the NAACP, the Urban League as well, and said, hey, if you have any questions, I'm open, come, come meet with me, we can sit down and talk. But I think you're right, that's, it's got to be stuff like that in terms of, you know, building relationships, collaborating, and, and understanding each other and trying to explain things.
Appreciate all your work, happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Step.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I want to acknowledge you for being as proactive as you are in dealing with a number of these issues. I know that prosecutor's office could simply function on a very reactive way, but many of these programs are proactive ways, and so I acknowledge you for that, that's great. Couple of things that I noted in the report, the number of circuit court trials, and then the number of convictions, and I thought you guys are doing a phenomenal job because I saw 45 circuit court trials and 57 convictions, and I, I wasn't quite sure how you're able to do that, but that's a pretty good conviction rate.
We, we, you know, we, if you look at it, we average, you know, probably around 90% conviction rate when we take a case to trial. And part of that is we have a very good county, I mean, there's good assistance, we have involved participants, and we're, we've always tried to emphasize, you know, hopefully we're not taking just a good case to trial. There are certain cases that, you know, there's other prosecutor's offices I know of that, you know, you lose a circuit court trial, you may lose your job. And we've never operated on that way, and I don't think that's how, you know, we tell our people to do it, or I know we don't tell our people to do it, but I hope they don't feel that way. So I think it's just a, you know, we have very dedicated employees, we have, we have really good trilatories. You look at the case last week, Lawrence Boivin, the secondary murder, two secondary murder convictions for the fleeing of the state trooper that caused the accident over on Broadmoor, killed two people. I mean, that was a tough case to get a secondary murder, but he, I know he worked on it, and you talk about these PowerPoints, he's a, he's a wizard in terms of putting visual stuff together, and we have a very good group of dedicated employees. We average 15 years. If there's somebody said about that sort of experience, doing this sort of work, that gets you, I think the results are the same.
And the, the numbers of caseload, as someone that practices in the private practice, 255 cases a year is a phenomenal number, I think. And thank you for at least putting that in some context, but that still is a significant number of cases that each of your attorneys have to handle over the course of a year. And I guess I'm, I think I expressed this to your predecessor at one time too, is at what point, what point is long-term overload going to impact, and when do you see that, and what do you need to do about that? Because it just strikes me that, that's great, and it's efficient, and, and saves money to the county, but in the long run, do we need to supplement that with additional staff?
Yeah, I was talking to Commissioner Cornick the other day, and I, I don't think so right now. I mean, part of it, if I saw people leaving, you know, early, you know, five, six years, getting their time, and hey, I've had enough, that, I think that would be a sign. When you have people staying 15, when people are retiring in our office, when you're staying that long, I think they enjoy what they do, I think we provide a good atmosphere for them. I don't see the signs of burnout in terms of people just saying, oh, I'm sick of this. If you saw people bailing out early and we start seeing maybe our, our numbers go down for how long people are staying, that might be a signal. I don't think we've reached that yet, I think everybody's fairly satisfied, and I don't hear clamoring for, oh my gosh, I'm overworked, I can't do this case, I have too much going on. They manage it, they're professionals, they know what they're doing. If anything, we'd need, you know, maybe investigators, people to serve subpoenas, or going back to the technology in terms of dealing with it in other ways that would relieve some pressure in terms of, you know, the body cams for the individual assistance, that's going to be an issue for them to watch, you know. Your typical, you know, stop, you know, drunk driving, they have four officers in ground, well, they all got their body cams on, and they could be there for an hour. So that's four hours of stuff that you've got to watch, the vast majority of usually, there's nothing there, but that's, you know, they got to watch that. So whether it's, you know, people to help out with that, whether we sign, maybe do our staff, get, you know, free them up for doing stuff like that, I think there's other ways that we can do that where we don't necessarily need to add attorney bodies, maybe some other bodies.
Does your office use paralegals?
We do, but not, you know, they're not, they're called paralegals, but it's not like they do research or anything like that, they're just basically support staff.
Well, they could do a lot of work in prepping for hearings, trials.
Sure. I talked a little bit with the, the county, the cadet program, trying to maybe get them in the rotation in our office to help with the body cams, they can actually watch some of the stuff. And body cams are wonderful for big incidents, you know, the Grand Rapids shooting that we did this summer that was, you know, laid out there, here's, you know, here's what happened, you know, stay, stay where the police are off, and they're great for big incidents, it's just the vast majority of the little stuff that doesn't reach that level, that's just, it's a tough slog.
Good work.
Commissioner Milton. Thank you, Chair. Hi Kurt. Couple of things, when you talked about the educating the schools as far as sending out to the superintendents and things, not to put more on your plate, but would you be, I know you had mentioned at one point, but would you be amenable or someone in your office, if schools were interested in you truly just coming right in, the sexting, the, the, the list could go on and on and on, that these kids really need to learn more about, but really the parents need to learn more about also. I digress a little bit, but I was absolutely shocked to hear that you can order narcotics on the black market and have it sent over the borders, wherever it is that you're living. And that was, that was, I mean, I think I'm old, but that was absolutely shocking to me. And I don't think I'm alone in not knowing that that is something that can happen. So is that ever an option, like say if Kentwood or Wyoming or Caledonia wanted to have an educational moment? Is there, are there the resources there at your office that someone could come in and educate?
Most definitely, I, I've done this, I did a big, I toured just about, I didn't go everywhere. Anyplace, I sent an invitation to all the townships supervisors to do the medical marijuana changes that are coming into effect, what, a week? So I went out to a lot of townships, just give a 15-minute presentation, hear the changes and so forth. So most definitely, we could, whether it be me, whether it be some of our office, we participate in citizen police academies, so I'd be much, you know, very happy to go out to school districts. I thought about actually doing that for the legalization of marijuana that's coming down because I think the schools should be aware of what potential could be when you start looking at Colorado and Washington. So most definitely, I'd be more than happy to do that.
And then to piggyback with that, as far as the opioids, Wyoming and Kentwood has, I'm sure it's been going on for a long time, but I've just become aware of it. It's called Government Mayors, it meets the second Monday of every month, and it is a board of anyone who has a position, be it to Congress, Senate, the mayor of Kentwood is there, the, well, I know Harold Mast has been going for a long time. And they discuss things at the different levels, the county level, the city level, the, and then the Lansing level. And opioids has been a topic that has come up, so again, just to put in the back of your mind, but if that's ever a time, it's eight o'clock on a, I can send you information. And last of all, I would like for everyone to acknowledge the fact that we have a very important gentleman here in front of us who is going to be awarded the Outstanding Alumni Award for Kentwood Public Schools in February. It is a fundraiser, so if anyone would like to come, the dinner's at Nodos, and you can cheer him right on. But anyway, he, he met all of the criteria, and it was really very a great honor for me because I've known the family for a while, so.
As long as you don't have any pictures of me in the speedo when I was on the switch. Just keep those away from anybody there.
I would much rather, sorry, no offense, have your brother.
Don't tell me you said that, so.
All right, Commissioner Cornick.
Thank you, Chair. We chatted last week and gave me a lot of information in regards to how you feel about your staff and the judges and that kind of stuff. So question I have for you today is timeliness of justice in our criminal justice system, I didn't see anything in the report. Do you feel that's right where it should be right now or could be sped up, or what's your opinion in regards to that? Sorry for the tough question, but...
No, I mean, in all honesty, yeah, there's, timeliness is an issue probably. I mean, there is, you know, and that's, once again, the, the going through the judges, there is some delays, especially when you're in the mental health, I just saw the article in the press about the guy, the mental health is really some delays there, where it delays, you know, he started DNA cases. Those are also state issues that you don't have a lot of control with, but we signed a DNA case to the state lab, we're talking 90 days right there. Well, the circuit court judges who all have a settlement conference in 30 days, we don't know what the DNA is, if it's positive, negative, we have no idea, so we got to push that off. So a lot of those are state pressures in terms of the state lab, some of the state mental health funding there in terms of just getting the information to us to make a decision. Your, your average, you know, possession of cocaine, you know, drunk driving, we're doing pretty well. It's probably the bigger cases, more serious cases that have, you know, more pieces, if you will, that, that, that is an issue.
So is there anything that we could do to help speed that up as a board? To help you?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the state, the statewide issues, you know, and technology, I mean, the body cams, that's, that's probably the biggest thing in terms of, is the technology, that we have to be able to get through those body cams and work through that, to find a way to deal with those. So, you know, maybe coming for, you know, hey, we need help with...
Talk to the IT department.
Something like that, that's going to be the, help speed things along.
Well, thank you for your work, appreciate all your innovation and the great job you're doing, and obviously, you have a lot of passion for your job, and we appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. Just wanted to first thank you and your department for professionalism. I unfortunately got to witness this last year, so that was good. Question, not on the indicators, that who's, who's chart the bail and bail setting and who makes bail?
That's all.
Is that court?
That's judges.
Okay.
We have very, you know, in the rare case, on a major case, on a murder or something, we may, you know, hey, let the, you know, it's more the detective, hey, let them know, here's the criteria. But that's ultimately the judges and court services who have, you know, and talking with Representative Grant, you know, we have a pretty good system here in terms of the six criteria that the court services, so it isn't just the judges picking a name out of the hat, but that's pretty much the purview of the bench and the court services.
All right. I'll ask them when they get here. Thank you, Mike.
All right. I want to ask one question, if I may. You mentioned the medical marijuana. I know that there is a movement underway to get some additional marijuana. I think there's a petition drive out to put on the ballot. Any thoughts on that, how it will affect our budget and our law enforcement?
Sure. Completely against it. I mean, I don't know how, you know, to get done and how it's going to impact our budget, you know, I don't know. But you look at the Prosecute and Transgress Association, I think, a paper that's out there that, you know, the association's adopted it, looking at what I've seen from Colorado in terms of the increased amount of crime, the increased amount of OUID operating while drug offenses, stuff like that, I think it's going to have an impact detrimentally. The exact numbers, I don't know, but I think we're going to see increased caseloads and increased issues with marijuana cases, just based on what happens in, you look at Colorado and Washington. So, short answer, I'm against it, and I'm going to try and do everything I can to get the ballot initiative defeated. Medical marijuana is one thing, but fewer legalization is not a good idea.
Wonderful. Thank you for your presentation and all you do in public service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to item five. Mary, would you like to read out your appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees for 2018?
Sure. This is a request to recommend to the Board various appointments to Boards, Commissions, and Committees for 2018. The Board of Commissioners, on an annual basis, appoint citizens and commissioners to Boards, Commissions, and Committees in accordance with applicable statutes or standing rules. Citizen interest in serving on the various Boards, Commissions, and Committees was solicited via accesskent.com. 165 applications were received from citizens for 55 vacancies. Three interview teams of commissioners reviewed all resumes and conducted interviews of citizen applicants for the various vacancies. The recommended nominees to fill vacancies are noted by a checkmark on the appointed Boards, Commissions, and Committees listing attached.
All right. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support, okay. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Breavy?
Yeah. This list, under the Marion Park Advisory Review Board, there was one person that applied late. So, do I need to make a motion?
Yep.
I would like to move Kim Distiger to be added to that. He's an architect.
Support.
And currently on the board.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, support by Commissioner Cornig. Any questions or comments on that? Amendment?
Just for clarification, you're moving to amend the main motion to add the name, correct?
I move to amend the main motion.
Yes. Any questions or comments on that? All in favor of amending that resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
I'll post. All right. Now, the question will be to approve the new version of the list. Do you have a motion?
You already have a motion.
Okay. You can move on. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I'll post. All right. We are, that is approved. We are now moving on to item six, Department of Public Works, create three full-time process lead line positions. Mary, would you please add that?
Sure. This is a request to recommend to the Board to create a process line lead position for the Department of Public Works, and to add three full-time equivalent positions to oversee the recycling and education center recycling line process and workers. Since January 1st, 2015, the DPW has contracted with Goodwill of Greater Grand Rapids to staff the recycling and education center process line, to which Goodwill has provided both line workers and supervisors. In October of 2017, Goodwill provided notice that they were ending the arrangement with the DPW effective November. The process line lead positions will be directly employed by the DPW. The line workers formerly employed by Goodwill are now employed through a temporary staffing agency that utilizes Kent County work release and temporary employees. The 2018 cost for wages and benefits for the three full-time process lead line positions is $174,000.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Cornig, support by Commissioner Breavy. Any questions or comments on this? Commissioner Volkowski?
Yeah. I think we almost have a quorum of the Board of Public Works.
Plus Ken sitting in the back.
Yeah, so we do. With that being said, yeah, just as a quick follow-up from our meeting last week at the Board, I'm even stronger in support of this than I was last week, because DAR did provide that bigger picture in the sense of how the parts come together, that we should save very conservative estimates, save a couple hundred thousand. As new equipment comes online, it could be even a higher savings. So, that's a very positive thing, and so, seeing this as a, you know, the details between the lines, a win-win for Goodwill and the Department, in the sense that Goodwill having its own staffing issues for its store and this and everything, so very, very positive, and thank the Director for giving us additional information since last Thursday.
Commissioner Maugh.
Just to restate what he said, Commissioner Volkowski, we've spent about a million dollars on that, that's been problematic since inception of the recycling center, and we've had problems with help there from, like I said, from the inception. Hopefully, this will solve that problem, and it looks like a cost of $174,000, which is really a reduction of cost of $174,000 from what we're currently paying. The total cost is in the neighborhood of a million dollars, and this will reduce the cost to the recycling center. So, hopefully, this will work for us, and this even goes back to Doug Wood when he was there when, at the inception. So, hopefully, this works and makes it more efficient, and people will really enjoy their job, even though it's an entry-level job, and maybe they move on and work for us at different levels of, at the plant, so.
Commissioner Step.
Thank you, Chair. And maybe Commissioner Maugh just answered what I was wondering about, is it's struck me that what's happening here is that Goodwill has terminated its contract, and so essentially, we're replacing three Goodwill employees by three county employees. So, is this a, is this essentially a economically or financially neutral move? Because I presume we're no longer paying Goodwill, we're hiring people in.
There's more employees involved in that, that from Goodwill that we had?
Well, there's a second component of it for the line people, but just on the lead position.
Well, that Director.
DAR is here to answer any questions, too.
Handle the details.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the question. We're going through a transitional time here. One thing is, Goodwill did notify us that they were eliminating the Transitional Work Experience Program. With that, or prior to that elimination of that program, they were providing 26 workers for the 26 positions on the process line each day, Monday through Saturday. But with that, they were, they had a combination of Goodwill-employed employees and Transitional Work Experience employees that were a variety of people, including the work release program through the Sheriff's Department. With the current retrofit and upgrade of equipment at the recycling center, we will no longer need 26 people on the process line. That will drop to somewhere between 15 and 18 total. We won't know the exact number until we commission the equipment and operator for about a month and dial that in. But we always did have one process line lead person working in each of the three main areas on the process line. So, we are essentially replacing what Goodwill provided in terms of supervision on the line with our people. We budgeted, we projected that in 2017, we will have spent about $1.1 million on Goodwill Transitional Work Experience employees. The new model, we come in roughly 970,000 for the year, where we now provide three additional DPW employees, and the balance then are Transitional Work Experience folks, but it's through a temporary agency. It does still involve the work release, but overall, the cost will decrease. We will know more in the next couple of months, if it's 15 employees, 16, 18, once we know how the new equipment works. For example, we're adding an OCC sorter, or corrugated cardboard sorting equipment. Up until now, we've had to touch physically with a person every piece of corrugated cardboard that came through the plant. With this new equipment installed, other than having a quality assurance person, we will no longer have to sort any corrugated cardboard by hand. So, it is a bit of a transition period for us, it will reduce the overall staffing with the new equipment. We'll have a better idea what the number looks like here in a few months, but it still fits within our 2018 budget for the process line.
My follow-up, but these are two different developments, are they not? I mean, the improvement at the facility, which allows for a reduction in the staffing, and then Goodwill's independent determination to no longer continue, which leaves us to basically put those positions on in-house employees?
Correct. As late as September, Goodwill had talked to us and had intended to renew their contract for 2018, but in October is when they noticed, and it wasn't just their elimination of the program at our facility, they eliminated the program at all locations where they offered that. So, it, we did, I don't want to use the word scramble.
So, it wasn't us, they have a programmatic change?
Correct. We worked pretty quickly to introduce this new staffing model and so forth, working extremely well, and kudos to the Sheriff's Department and the undersheriff and her, her staff for making the work release program work under this new model.
So, if I can distill that down again, it looks like we're spending an extra $75,000, $174,000, but in fact, the net effect of this is going to save the county.
Correct. We expect it to be, the total process line processing cost will be under a million. We were projecting to spend 1.1, it's within our 2018 budget. I can't give you an exact number, because we don't know what the exact number of workers will actually have going into 2018. I would say by the end of January, we could update our Board of Public Works and the full Board on what that looks like.
And one last question, the recycling is really building up in my garage. When is that going to come back?
Monday.
Monday. Thank you.
We are, if I could, we are, tomorrow, we will begin to commission the equipment, all the equipment's installed. We have to get, it's a very computerized mechanized system where each conveyor and each processed piece of equipment needs to talk to each other and work in sync. All the equipment is in, all the wiring is being completed. Tomorrow, they start, they'll start it up and begin to operate it, we'll work out the kinks, if you will, and Monday morning, we'll start receiving recycling. So, it's been a difficult three weeks for, for me, because, last thing I want to tell any resident or any haller is, we can't receive your material, because we process Monday through Saturday every week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Poncic.
The other stand took care of my question.
Any other questions for DAR? All right. Moving forward, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll post.[1712.12]